Good evening. At 6 o'clock, we'll call to order the meeting of the Auburn Common Council. We'll begin with a moment of silent meditation or reflection all about a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Move on to roll call. Councilman Fincham?
Here.
Councilman Braun?
Here.
Councilman Webb?
Here.
Councilwoman DeWitt?
Here.
Councilman Williams?
Here.
Councilman Bundy?
Here.
Councilwoman Prosser?
Here.
Council in front of you, you have the meeting minutes from the August 5 regular meeting.
Move to approve as presented.
Okay, we have a motion of second to approve the minutes. Any questions or discussion? Harry None, I'll call for a question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carried. Recognition of visitors, we have Valerie Simmons, Martha Rubeake, Mike Littlejohn, Andy Baron, Bill Schab, Jim Catterett, Jeff Jones. Welcome. Under Communications, we have a presentation from the Eckhart Public Library. So please come forward. Welcome.
Okay, thank you so much. It's good to be back. My second year presenting to you all. Thank you for taking the time out of your meeting to hear from the library. As you know, I'm Valerie Simmons. I'm the Executive Director at Eckhart Public Library. And I'm here to highlight some particular things. One is our longevity. We have been serving the community for the last 115 years. Like to highlight the staff efforts, the support from the community, and hopefully the support that the community feels coming from us, and also highlight the value of our library services and resources. So this is an example of some things that our staff members do for the library and for the community. We do have outreach, mobile outreach. We load up the van and we take materials to people in the community who, for whatever reason, can't get into the library themselves. Sometimes they're homebound, sometimes they're educators, and some just have a hard time finding the time to make it to the library. So we go to them. You'll see examples of staff helping with information, providing resources, programming, and also keeping our grounds in top shape. For some of our staff, the dedication to the library spans literal decades. This is an example of one of our staff members, Angelica. She volunteered with her grandmother when she was little. Her grandmother did Mother Goose Storytimes. And now those kids she provided the storytime to are college graduates. And Angelica is now a programming specialist at our library who is also helping teens and children. So appreciate that. We also work really hard to build and maintain a collection of materials that represent the community that we serve. There's a lot of time and focus spent on these endeavors. Staff who select materials research using review journals and other reputable resources. And then all the selections are reviewed to ensure the standards are met according to our collection development policy. And again, you saw this last year, but it's just a visual representation of the different partnerships and the strength that we have embedded in our community. Everything from medical needs, tax services, books, book clubs, literacy programs. One of the most recent partnerships we have with the American Heart Association is a service called Libraries with Heart. And that puts a blood pressure monitor cuff and instruction booklet in the library for patrons to use when they're there. And also a second set of those same things that we can put in our library of things for patrons to check out. We also continue to work actively with other libraries. The two pictures here are just a couple of examples of that. One is the Mock Newberry. It's a partnership with all of the DeKalb County libraries to select some of the best children's fiction to highlight those items. We also received a grant through the Community Foundation in partnership with the Fort Wayne Children's Choir and First Steps in Music to provide music programming for children across the county. And what we try to do at the library is more than books, although we do love those. We try and hit all different aspects of life, whether someone's checking out a Lego set from the Library of Things, or being trained on CPR, or providing space for blood drives, vaccination clinics. We host e-fingerprinting, document shredding. We try and support the community in all of those ways. When we had the July shred event, we collected 1.79 tons of documents. They were responsibly disposed of, and that is the equivalent of about 30 trees. So these are all great things, and we love those. But what does that really mean for the community? And words like access and opportunity and value come to my mind. So let's talk about some value. So using a tool called a library use value calculator, we were able to tabulate that over $1.5 million worth of books were checked out by our community over the course of the last year. That represents an average Amazon price for like items. And add on to that $268,882 worth of movies and TV shows that were also checked out by our community. And if you add those two numbers together, that total is more than our 2025 annual budget. That number does not include digital items, or magazines, video games, audiobooks, that kind of thing. People also will come to us and use our Wi-Fi. So we had 37, over 37,000 public Wi-Fi sessions from the last time we were here, July 2024 to July 2025. And you'll see here just some different examples of what people use our internet for. So yeah, there's a lot of entertainment kinds of things, but there's also access to resources when people need to print something off, they're applying for jobs or other social services, they're working on their taxes, attending meetings, doing a telehealth session, working on homework, that kind of thing. We also offer Wi-Fi hotspots to check out. You may recognize this guy. I hadn't met him before he came into the library to get his library card earlier this year. Like you thought that this wasn't going to be included. You had to know. We had 904 new library card registrations, including this guy. You may recognize him as Auburn Mayor Clark. And by using his new library card to check out one audiobook a week, he can save over $500 a year with his library card. Another thing that's a little bit more complicated to tabulate is the value of the questions that staff answer. So as people come into the library, we have staff who are not just dedicated to what they do, but they're highly educated. On our staff of, currently we have 30 employees on staff. Nine of them hold master's degrees in library science. Every staff member working with the public has to be certified through the state, the State Library of Indiana. So there's value there. And this is tabulating kind of the number of questions that come in versus the average hourly rate of our employees. So... There are different types of assistance that we give. These are just two examples of assistance that you may or may not realize or see every day. But here's Allison. She's assisting a patron with sending a fax. And our patrons tend to send faxes for legal, government, medical purposes. So it's good to be able to help them with that. And our faxing services are free of charge to our community members. And then Sarah on the other side, our public services specialist, she assists a patron with the library computers. It might be a research question. It might be help navigating, setting up an email, troubleshooting, kind of trying to make sense of all the information that's out there, information and misinformation. So providing that kind of technical assistance is something that we take pride in as well. So here's a real-life example. Okay? So this is Rita. Rita's used the library every week for 80 years. And just over the last year, she read about three biographies a week. She checked out, over the course of the year, 50 magazines and 25 CDs. And when she fell, unfortunately, had that accident, she was able to borrow a walker from the Library of Things and received items, item deliveries during that time to her home through our mobile services. So Rita was able to save over $4,000 by making use of library resources. And my question is, would Rita have had access to those resources if not for the public library? She may not have been able to read, to have access to those magazines. So it does become a question of quality of life for Rita. So we're glad that we can be there for her. We also heavily prioritize early learning. And the photos that you see here are just some examples of the different types of learning that young people can do when they come in. A couple of these, the vet station and the pretend post office are learn-through-play that we have set up in our secret garden. Right now, you can come and play with our lemonade stand. We've got some sensory bins people can use. And we've also been trying to work with the schools to do more with educational opportunities with our native landscaping. And then here are just our favorite pictures of some of our youngest patrons who are well on their way to the 1,000 books before kindergarten. And that's another opportunity to think about value that our young patrons have access to thousands of books to read before kindergarten, where they may not have access to those if not for the public library. You may recognize some of those kids. So here's another example. Here's Johnny. And we're really happy because Johnny loves the library. He comes to a program called It's Elementary every week. His mom lets him check out 10 books, two movies, and a video game each week. And if you have a kid, you know that you have to set those limits sometimes. So he checks out those each week. Last week, he brought home the Moana Encanto and the Little Mermaid soundtracks for his little sisters, because Johnny's a good kid. So by making use of the public library, Johnny's family saved or did not have to spend $9,295 annually from him using the library. When you think about programming, and when you try and set a value to programming, kind of look at the average price of like a movie matinee ticket, right? 10, 11 bucks, something like that. So again, the question, would Johnny have these opportunities if not for the public library? He might, he might not. So again, the valued offer to attendees for library programs is over $100,000 a year. So again, the number of attendees to our programs and the cost of an average matinee movie ticket, this is probably on the low end. It's just a way to quantify the value that people receive from attending programs. And here are some examples. So we've got a very happy participant making some artwork over the Read Do Explore Summer Reading Program. The top here, we've got a very dedicated D and D club that meets. And the bottom picture here with the manual typewriter, that was a bus trip that our public services manager arranged to the Limberlost Historic Site. And then again, another example of opportunities that may not be something that could help happen elsewhere. We partnered with McKenna Harrison. All of the second grade students came over across the street and worked with one of our volunteers about the native gardens that we have at the library. It's part of their project-based learning curriculum. And that field trip went so well that this upcoming school year, every second grade classroom will be coming to the library to learn about our native gardens, pollinators. So if you can't tell, after all of this discussion, we're busy. We're busy at the library, and we're thankful for that. So again, looking at the past year, over 3,000 meeting room bookings. Where would those 3,000 bookings meet if not for the library, right? There aren't a whole lot of places to do that. And those are formal meeting room bookings. So think about the people who just, you know, meet to play with their grandkid in the secret garden, or they just meet and talk to someone, you know, out on the regular library floor. So nearly 10,000 people reached through our program and outreach efforts. And our total patron visit count for that same period, almost 74,000 people. This is one example of a meeting room space. This is a snapshot from a Marvel Comics drawing class with artist Jerry Decare. Very well attended. And again, an opportunity that I don't know where else you would, you would find that opportunity. So the next slide indicates the item donations that we were able to add into our collection. So we're able to supplement our traditional, our typical ways of purchasing materials with item donations. So when you drop off donations at the library, you can feel really good about that. Because if they're in good shape and they're popular titles and we can make use of them in our collection, we're able to add those in. And if it's not something that we can make use of, it goes to the Friends of the Library for their book sale. And the Friends of the Library, as you surely saw in the paper, are very generous with their donations to us. And our Friends of the Library donations fund 100% of our programming. So here's an example of a very good night for the Eckhart Public Library. There's a picture of me receiving a check for $18,000 from the Friends of the Library. That was from a variety of things, some Dine to Donate, the Strawberry is Around the Fountain event, and the once-a-month book sales. We also receive money from the Eckhart Library Foundation. Their goal is a little bit different. They support the, some operations and maintenance that we need with our historic building and our library campus. So we're very thankful for their commitment and the generosity to our library. We also receive money through donations as well. Last year, we received a little less than $10,000 in just general donations from, from the community. And we really strive to do the absolute best job that we can for all of our patrons. And here, here's some feedback that we've received. "I love the library so much, and I also love to read. I also love cats." "I love reading so much. I'm really glad that there are libraries. Thank you so much." And I want to thank you again for your time. I also want to invite you, if you haven't been to the library recently, to come out. I'll give you a tour. You can tour on your own. I'd love to talk to you more about the library and all it has to offer. And if you are interested in attending our budget adoption meeting, that'll be at our September 10 board meeting at 6 o'clock at the Williner Genealogy Center. Do any of you have any questions for me? All right, so that must mean I covered everything. Again, thank you so much for having me.
Thanks for sharing. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address the council? Anyone in the public that would like to address the council? Harry None will move on. Clerk Treasure?
Good evening. I have the current vouchers for $5,349,782.43.
Move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion of second. Any discussion or questions?
Obstain from 96051 and the amount of $60.72 for my place of employment.
Any other discussion or questions? Harry None, I'll call for a question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carried. Moving on to ordinances and resolutions.
Ordinance number 2025-14, an ordinance approving a modified plan development district ordinance for East Auburn Estate subdivision. Summary, an ordinance approving a modified plan development district or organization, or ordinance of the East Auburn Estate subdivision, a 29.445 acre property located on southwest corner of Auburn Drive and County Road 46A. I move that we pass ordinance number 2025-14 on second and final reading.
Okay, we have a motion of second. Any questions or discussion? Harry None, I'll call for a question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
What time?
5:00 PM. I think we had 30 to 45 minutes. That'd be sufficient. As we're wrapping up budgets and so forth.
I'm okay.
Yeah. Perfect. Okay, we'll work on getting that scheduled. So thank you. Any other new business? Good and general, or excuse me, general good and welfare of the community? Next regular council meetings, Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025 at 6:00 PM.
Move to adjourn.
Yeah, for a second now. Emily, I believe. Yeah. Okay, we have a motion to second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close.
Got a few.